Okay, today is Tuesday, April 9th at 6:00 PM and a meeting of Salem Kaiser School Board is called to order. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, this evening, the board is here except for Director Hyon and she will join us on the telephone tonight. Additionally, you've probably noticed a change in our superintendent. This is Mr. Jim Orp and tonight he is the interim Assistant Superintendent who will act in our Superintendent Perry's place. Any agenda modifications? I don't believe so. And let's go ahead with Spotlight on success.
Auburn. So first we'll start with Auburn. Sorry. This mic right here?
Yeah. We'll start with Auburn first.
So tonight's a first for our Business Partner of the Month Spotlight. When we asked our school office specialist Yuri Coronado if Auburn Elementary would like to nominate a business partner for the month, she told us no. She said she didn't want to recognize just one, she had four. So I'm going to invite all of them to come up now and join Mr. Orp and Director Goss there to receive your fancy certificates. We've got Auburn Elementary representatives, we've got Tabernaculo de Salem, Professional Interpreters, Cherry City Chiropractor, Chiropractic and Refit. So... Oh, they can come? That's great! So, so like I said, Yuri told us that she didn't want to recognize just one. She shared that we have several business, important business partners and she wouldn't be able to single out one. Not only that, but she also needed to include a community partner. So tonight, we're honoring three business partners and one community partner nominated by Auburn Elementary. Yuri says that Auburn Elementary focuses a lot on, a lot of effort on students and families in the district's Step or Homeless Program and families that don't qualify for government assistance and don't have enough to eat. That's where a neighborhood church steps in. Tabernaculo de Salem, raise your hand, there we go, is located near Auburn Elementary. Its members take, its members volunteer to help in many ways. For instance, they take pellets of, pallets of food provided through Take Action and helped organize a pantry, make food boxes and deliver meals to family. They also help distribute clothing donations to families. Tabernaculo de Salem also helps with board games during family fun nights and two church members coach Auburn's soccer team through Grasp. Grasp uses soccer to help students enjoy school and develop good character. Cherry City Chiropractic, there we go, helped Auburn during Thanksgiving by providing dinners to all the families in the Step and Homelessness Program. They also gave a presentation to families about healthy eating habits. In May, the teachers are going to be really excited because Cherry City is going to provide lunch for the entire staff during Staff Appreciation Week and they are talking with Auburn about a possible school supply drive at the beginning of next school year. Liz Lindsay with Refit Revolution taught a dance class to two large groups of students in January. It was more like a party during a class. It was part of a positive behavioral interventions and supports reward for students who had demonstrated good beha, good behaviors and attendance. And of course, we kicked off our attendance campaign at Auburn Elementary this year. And the last partner Auburn wants to recognize tonight is Professional Interpreters. Yay! They provide translators for Auburn's monthly parent and teacher club meetings. They also sponsored the school's soccer team, T-shirts and helped out in other ways upon requests. With 680 students, Auburn Elementary is the second largest of the 42 elementary schools in the district, so the support from these caring partners before us is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. I get to present one of our Community Partners of the Month. If I could have Allison Kelly, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Liberty House, any of her board members and the district's Prevention and Protection Coordinator Debbie Joa come forward. April is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and there is nothing more heartbreaking than the troubling fact that so many children are victims of abuse or neglect. There were more than 11,000 confirmed cases of child abuse or neglect in Oregon in 2017. Fortunately, there are dedicated professionals who are working every day to address the needs of these children and their families. In our community, Liberty House is a leader in this area. We are fortunate to work with them and we want to honor Liberty House as one of our Community Partners of the Month for April 2019. Liberty House is a child abuse assessment center serving Marion and Pope Counties. Liberty House was founded in 1999 and served 165 children that year. Twenty years later, it is projected that they will serve nearly 1,000 children in 2019. Salem Kaiser Public Schools Prevention and Protection Coordinator Debbie Joa with our Human Resources Department says that Liberty House is a place that we can refer families to if there are concerns about child abuse or neglect or if they need counseling services. Childhood trauma, if left untreated, can prevent a child from achieving, achieving their full potential and their dreams, says Liberty House CEO Allison Kelly. But most children can heal with the right therapeutic intervention. Liberty House also supports Salem Kaiser by training staff through its Stewards of Children program and has also assisted teachers by visiting classes and talking with students about child abuse and teen relationship abuse. Thank you for the important work you do, which is way more comprehensive than I can explain in this brief presentation. Congratulations as being recognized as one of our Community Partners of the Month for April 2019. Next are the culinary programs from North Salem High School, McNary High School and South Salem High School. If you all come up.
As the CTE Director, I get to do double duty. I get to help with that duty and also introduce this Student Success Spotlight for April of 2019. Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. I'll wait. So the, the Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association Pro Start Invitational happened this year and the culinary programs from our high schools are some of the most popular programs that we have in our CTE courses across the district. We have outstanding chefs teaching these programs. As demonstrated by McNary, North Salem and South Salem High School's success at last month's event. The Pro Start Invitational includes a culinary competition which is similar to the TV show Iron Chef. Teams of students prepare a unique menu while racing against the clock. The meal must include a starter, an entree and a dessert. Chef Wendy Bennett's team from McNary High School won second place in the culinary competition. The menu students created, get ready for your mouth to start watering, included fresh Oregon-inspired salad roll starter, sesame crusted local steelhead for the entree and coconut sticky rice pudding for dessert. Along with their team win, McNary's chef mentor Irina Bakun won the Pro Start Mentor of the Year Award and McNary students earned $18,250 each in scholarships from culinary schools across the country. Chef Mary Ann Davis's team from North Salem High School took third place in the culinary competition. The menu students created included a crab stack starter, salmon Neptune for the entree and tuxedo, tuxedo crepes for dessert. North Salem also won the teamwork award and the sanitation award in the culinary category. Students won a total of more than $60,000 in scholarships from culinary schools across the country. And Chef Laura Hofer's team from South Salem High School won first place in the management team competition. They developed a new restaurant concept and presented it to a panel of judges in a business environment sort of like the TV show Shark Tank. Because they took first place, students on the South Salem team won a total of over $200,000 in scholarships. South Salem now moves on to the National Pro Start Invitational, May 8th through 10th in Washington DC. And in addition, Chef Hofer won the Oregon Pro Start Educator of the Year, which includes a trip to Washington DC to compete for National Educator of the Year. Congratulations to our awesome culinary programs, the teachers and students on your amazing success. Keep up your great work and good luck to South and Chef Hofer at Nationals.
Can I say something? On May 18th, all of our programs, including McKay, are working together in our fourth annual chop challenge at the Salem Saturday Market. So come on down and cheer for our kids. We all work together and cook and we have a competition and some of our board members have been judges in the past. We might be asking you to judge. But this is when we all work together.
This is when we all work together to cook, but this chop challenge is going to be desserts only. So if you want to be a judge, we're having desserts only, but all the culinary programs work together for this one. So come down, May 18th, Salem Saturday Market.
Next, we'll be recognizing our Technology Instructional Mentor and Mr. Biondi will be coming up to do that. Mr. Biondi, do you want to come on up? Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Ethererton. I got the wrong one. Matt's next, right?
I'm not quite as tall as Matt. Interim Superintendent Orp and School Board Director Goss and School Board Members, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Cindy Ethererton and I am here representing NCC E as the Board of Directors interim president. I am also the Elementary STEAM Program Associate within Salem Kaiser's Elementary Curriculum and Instruction Department. As you may be aware, the Northwest Council of Computers in Education, NCC E, is an international nonprofit professional development organization that seeks to assist educational communities to reach their institutional goals through the use of 21st century skills. They also host the largest ed tech convention in the state of, excuse me, in the Northwest. On behalf of NCC E, I would like to recommend, recognize Matt. Matt, would you join us with your family and Julia and if they're... And I'll come and bring you your plaque in just a second. Matt is the Instructional Mentor at Whittaker Middle School and this year's NCC E 2019 Outstanding Technology Educator of the Year. Matt is being honored for being a strong peer leader and an instructional mentor throughout the district and the state of Oregon. He has been a significant influence of staff and student performance through the integration of computers and related technologies within district adaptive curriculum, including, or excuse me, offering innovative instructional approaches. He has also worked outs, with outside agencies and vendors to further develop quality tools that benefit student achievement. Julia DeWitt, Whittaker Middle School's Administrator, shared that Matt takes a vision to the next level and develops quality professional learning to accomplish it. He is also a role model that pushes himself to be vulnerable and to always be learning. During the last few years, he worked with Salem Kaiser's Career Technical Education Programs and Oregon Mesa to provide teachers and re, with resources to teach students problem-solving skills using various maker technologies. Congratulations, Matt. We are so proud of you for you, for your representation of Salem Kaiser and being the, one of the best in the Northwest.
And our last spotlight, Eric Richards will come up.
I'd like to invite South High School Principal Laura Tiffin and Special Education Teacher Brennan Young to come forward. Tonight, we recognize Brennan Young, who is a Special Education Teacher at South Salem High School. South Salem High was recognized just last month by the Special Olympic South Salem High was recognized just last month by the Special Olympics as an Oregon Unified Champion School. Tonight, we'd like to celebrate South Salem for this important achievement and recognize Teacher Brennan Young for his leadership on this important project. The Unified Champion School program brings some of South Salem's students who are receiving special education services, including some of their most severely impaired students, into the spotlight to train and compete in a variety of team sports alongside their peers. Through sporting events, PE classes, and other leadership opportunities, the Unified Champion Sports Program unites South Salem as one student body, working together to experience success as Saxons. South Salem Principal Laura Tiffin says that Special Education Teacher Brennan Young came up with the idea, crafted the vision, and set out to do the work to make the unified programs happen at South Salem High School. By pairing with a PE teacher, Brennan provided a unified PE class that connects athletes with disabilities with their peer partners, creating connections and also many lasting friendships. This program has extended to assemblies during which the unified teams actually play each other for school bragging rights in both the sports of football and basketball. And I attended just recently the assembly at South Salem High School, and all I'll tell you is that gym was packed and that gym was rocking. Brennan's leadership in these efforts is changing lives for everyone involved, and I might add is inspiring our other high schools as well, as next year, we're expecting that every high school will have unified PE classes. Our own Student Services Coordinator, Melissa Glover, who works with high schools in our district, says this program does more than just unify students in sport. It truly does bring the whole school together. So, tonight, we recognize you, Brennan Young. Congratulations, and great work, South Salem Saxons. Tonight, in addition to recognizing South Salem High School, we also want to take a moment to shine a spotlight on a few of the Salem Kaiser points of pride from the recently released Oregon Department Annual Education -- or Special Education Report Card for 2017-18. Here are a few of the prominent highlights. The number of students receiving special education services who graduated with a regular diploma in their four-year cohort increased by 2.8 percentage points from the previous year. The number of students receiving special education services who graduated with a regular diploma in the five-year cohort increased by 7.6 percentage points in one year. Students who are included in a regular classroom less than 40% of their day decreased another 1.1%, which is great news. With the important decrease this report card period, more and more of our cognitively impaired students are accessing elective and core courses in general education classrooms. Over a three-year period, our district has reduced the percentage of students spending less than 40% of their day in a regular classroom from 19.2% to 14%, and we're closing in on the state target. Our most significant statistical improvement for 2017 and 18 came in the area of post-secondary outcomes for students who exited special education in K-12 only one year previous. We're required to conduct a survey of every one of the students who exit special education in K-12 one year after that exit. For 2017 and 18, there were significant increases in all of our post-secondary outcomes. Within one year of leaving high school, the number of students who exited special education services and were enrolled in higher education increased by 12.2 percentage points. The number who were either enrolled in higher education or who were competitively employed increased by 25.8%. A very important and final point of pride I want to share with you tonight is that our district, of the nine largest school districts in our state, Salem Kaiser was the only one not to have a problem with disproportionately suspending or expelling students with disabilities. This accomplishment was called out and recognized by OPB in their article regarding the 2017-18 Special Education Report Cards. So, thank you for giving a moment to share a few of these important highlights from the 17-18 Special Education Report Card. I want to acknowledge your commitment to our students with disabilities who receive special education services, and also the hard work of many of our district administrators, licensed and classified staff, our parent and family member partners, and all of the community stakeholders who work closely with us, because the collaborative effort between all of them is strongly reflected in this report. While I think we'd all agree room for improvement certainly exists, we remain committed to that further progress, but have a lot of reason to be proud of the results from this report card for 17-18. Thank you.
Mr. Richards, you may have all the minutes you want when you have reports like that to deliver, and thank you. Oh, Chuck, I'm sorry.
I just thought it would be worthwhile to thank Eric for his leadership in this whole progress. So, Eric, thank you for your dynamic leadership.
Next, we progress on to the public comment. That's for public comments on things in the agenda, and we had no one sign up for that this evening. So, we'll go past that to action items. The first one on our list, we have several items this evening, but the first one is a proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week. Director Blasi, would you like to read that proclamation?
So, the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation, "Whereas, the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world; and whereas, teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education; and whereas, teachers encounter students with widely differing backgrounds; and whereas, our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students; and whereas, teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service; and whereas, our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims May 6th through 10th, 2019, to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and encourages all members of our community to join with the board in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work."
Thank you. Director Blasi, would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation as read by Director Blasi.
Thank you. All those -- any discussions? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I think we'll call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the proclamation? O-D.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? As a result -- oh.
Director Hyon voted aye.
Thank you, Director Hyon. And the results were a unanimous vote to accept this proclamation. And I'm going to ask that all teachers in the audience, please join me at the podium for a signing of the proclamation. Do we have teachers?
Well, I know Tyler's here. Tyler's a teacher.
We're going to move on now to our action items. And the first one is to approve the purchase of Auburn Park. Mr. Wolf?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Goss, interim Assistant Superintendent Orth, and members of the board. So, tonight, you have an action item for the purchase of Auburn Park from Marion County. It's approximately 4.37 acres for a total transaction cost of approximately $375,000. This item was presented for a first reading at the March 12th meeting and is now presented for action. Staff recommends that you approve the purchase of Auburn Park from Marion County and authorize the superintendent or the chief operations officer as her designee to sign all documents related to the completion of this transaction. And incidentally, the Auburn Design Team has begun meeting and is looking forward to incorporating this acreage into the schematic site plan.
Madam Chair.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move the board approve the purchase of the Auburn Park from Marion County and authorize superintendent or the chief operations officer as the superintendent's designee to sign all documents related to the completion of this transaction.
A motion was made by Director Green and a second by Director Kylo. I thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say thank you to the county for being so easy for us to work with, because a lot of times when you deal with transactions like this, it'll drag on. We probably would never see it in our lifetimes. But this was done pretty quickly, especially for being government. So, I just want to say thank you to the county for taking care of all of that and working with us, and thank you to Mike and the rest of our administration for getting that taken care of. And I also wanted to say that Auburn was actually one of the first schools I visited as a board member, because right when I was elected, I was like, man, I'm going to visit all of the schools. Turns out, there's a lot of them, and to actually get to know the teachers in this schools takes a lot longer than just visiting once. But I just want to say, when I did visit Auburn, not only were they so welcoming and friendly, I was shocked to hear the amount of students that we had in a building of that size. And so, I'm really excited to see as our new constructions happen on these schools, especially Auburn, I'm really happy that we're able to get this done, so that way Auburn can have a little bit more room for the kiddos. So, anyways, thank you to Auburn, and also to the county for dealing with this. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
She said aye.
We also have a vote of aye by Director Hyon. So, the vote was unanimous, and we'll move on to Mr. Wolf again.
Yes. The second action item that I'll be presenting tonight is the property transaction with City of Kaiser. The city's transportation system plan calls for the addition of a dedicated right turn lane onto 14th Avenue off of Lock Haven, and this was presented to the board at the March 12th meeting as well, and is now presented for action. One of the questions that came up at the time was being very clear about whose responsibility it is for ongoing operations and maintenance of the transportation facility, and we had our legal counsel work with the City of Kaiser's legal counsel to actually change the language in the dedication so that it's explicit that the City of Kaiser will maintain and operate the transportation facility. So, staff recommends that you approve the property transaction, and again, authorize the superintendent or the chief operations officer as her designee to sign all documents related to the completion of this transaction.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I move the board approve the property transaction, authorize the superintendent and the chief operations officer as the superintendent's designee to sign all documents related to the completion of this transaction.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Director Green, and a second by Director Lee. All those in favor?
Hold on, Madam Chair, if I could say something here.
Sure.
I really want to appreciate Mike and our attorney working to assure that the ongoing costs are going to be maintained by the City of Kaiser. That was a concern that I had with regard to this, so I appreciate the work on that. I didn't want to put any more district assets at risk with regard to this, so I appreciate the City of Kaiser working with us as well. Again, Mike, Paul, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, we will move on now to CBOC.
Yes. Action 4D, Appointment of Additional Members to the Community Bond Oversight Committee. Essentially, at the last meeting, the board requested that staff seek an additional member to serve on the committee as a representative from McKay feeder system. So, we initiated a very specific application process that opened on March 19th and closed on April 1st. We received one application from Anisito J. Mundo, and in addition, Lynette Mobington is also -- part of the original structure was to have a student from the Student Equity Committee onboard, and so, we're happy to also present Lynette as that member. And just so you know, Lynette is a sophomore at McKay. She's a member, obviously, of the Student Equity Committee. She's actually here tonight, so I get to call you out tonight. She's also a student employee working in our Community Engagement and Communications Department, where she's helping to improve communication with students by raising awareness about issues that will impact them, and clearly, being on CBOC will be an important position for her in that role as well. So, staff recommends the board approve the proposed additional members to CBOC with Mr. Mundo and Ms. Mobington.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, so moved.
And the motion is?
To accept the names presented to us for participation in the CBOC.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Director Lipold. Motion was made by Director Kylo with a second by Director Lipold. Is there any further discussion? I'll call a -- pardon? Oh, Director Lipold.
Just want to say thank you to you, as well as our other community member who stepped up. Just because the more people we get involved in our democratic republic, the better off we're going to be. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So again, the vote is unanimous. And that includes Director Hyun as well on the phone. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. There are three items on the consent calendar tonight. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Director Kylo?
I wish to pull 5C.
5C on the consent calendar is pulled by Director Kylo.
5C.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the board approve the consent calendar items 5A and 5B.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion was made by Director Green to accept A and B on the consent calendar. And that was seconded by Director Kylo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on A and B. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Director Kylo, would you like to speak regarding your pulling of item 5C?
Yes. My question is, is how were these individuals selected? I'm surprised at the, at the low number and would have expected more. So John will, I'm sure, give me the criteria.
Director Bate? I'd be happy to give you the breakdown. In addition to legal criteria for the consideration of having a teacher who has completed four years of successful employment and achieved contract status in a previous district, Salem Kaiser also asks that supervisors nominate people who have evaluations with average ratings greater than proficient and that they have not been subject to discipline or corrective action.
Thank you. With that, unless there's others, I would move that we accept 5C.
Second.
It's been, the motion has been made by Director Kylo to accept 5C, was seconded by Director Lee.
Yes.
We'll come to a vote. All those in favor of 5C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I heard you, Director Hyun. We'll put you on the aye side. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on at this point to. The Howard Street property.
No, no.
No, did I miss one? I did.
We have no readings?
There are no readings this evening. That's correct. And we'll move on to the strategic plan. Mr. Bate?
Thank you, Chair Goss. I get to give a few highlights related to the strategic plan report. And this is specifically talking about the number six on this year's strategic plan, which is about analyzing recruitment, hiring, and instruction strategies through enhanced HR metrics in order to increase organizational efficiency and diversity in our workforce. I've had the opportunity to talk with the board a couple of years now about goals that have aligned with this year's goal. And we've been working to continue that progress about cleaning data, which is about collecting and organizing our data in more meaningful ways. And I talk a little bit about that in the report. Specifically, we have improved some standardized methods in which we store our data. And that's important because that really is what allows us then to pull data year in and year out that we can start to monitor trends with some assurance of accuracy. So I wanted to bring your attention to that. We also are excited that we are monitoring our interactions and our data around our student teachers. We're fortunate in this district that we have partners with lots of universities and we have lots of student teachers that get to have that experience with our students in our schools. And we're continuing to provide those folks with more integration and access during their student teaching experience with the hopes of more people seeking employment here. So we're monitoring the data about those activities and hopeful that will result in more student teachers looking for long-term employment with us. Some other things that I wanted to highlight is that we are now in our fourth year of our bilingual scholars program. And you may recall, this is a program in partnership with Western Oregon University where students who are interested in a career in teaching work with the university to enter the teacher preparation program. And then those students will now start graduating between now and December of 2019. We have 11 folks projected to be available, to be considered for employment with us as a teacher. This is a very exciting pathway that has been in the works for some time. And we're excited that we're seeing those folks complete that program with a high degree of success. And we're looking forward to having some of them join us in our teaching workforce. I should mention that there's multiple other pathways that the district continues to support in order to diversify and retain employees. And those are highlighted in the report. The other part that is important to look at every year is the total attrition rate of our employees. And I'm happy to report that we are at or below national averages related to staff attrition. Specifically, this year, we've been able to look at that data in a little more disaggregated form. Again, back to some of the reasons I mentioned in my opening remarks about how we store data. And you'll see that in the graph in the report where it talks about the percent of licensed teachers who retire versus other resignations. And just as a highlight for you, approximately 2% to 4% of our staff seeks retirement each year. And that leaves about 6% or 7% of staff who separates for other reasons. And finally, tonight, I wanted to take a moment to talk about the diversity in our workforce. We have talked to you at various occasions throughout the year about how we're working hard to increase that. And many of the data points that we have followed really point to needing more people of diversity in our applicant pools. And is what I mean by that is the district historically has done a good job of hiring people from diverse backgrounds in proportion to the number of folks represented in the applicant pool. And so we are looking for ways to continue to increase the diversity of people who choose to apply for jobs with us so that we can employ a greater level of diversity. I am happy to report that this last year, we were able to increase the number of diverse applicants from 26% in 1718 to 27.1 in 1819. I know that that's a small game, but the fact that we're moving in the right direction is very encouraging to us. Any questions tonight?
Director Blasey?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Could you summarize just briefly? You mentioned that, you know, the other reasons. So we do collect data on other reasons for attrition. Do you see trends in other reasons generally?
Yeah, great question. The two primary trends that people choose to separate that is not retirement are to either be home with children or because they're relocating out of the area.
Director Green?
Thanks, Madam Chair. John, while we're doing a little bit better job of getting folks of diversity, I'd encourage us to keep that on our strategic plan as we move forward. In the strategic plans of the past, you know, there's been, we're going to work on it, we're going to continue to work on it, we're going to improve. I hope as we move forward, and I won't be on the board any longer, but I hope as you take a look at the strategic plan, it is to increase the diversity of our workforce because all the research shows that if you can put people that look like students in front of those students, they will perform better, whether that's teachers, instructional aides, our librarians, our classified employees or principals. So I really encourage you to keep that on the strategic plan and keep your eye on the ball as we move forward with that because we are now a minority-majority school district and our staff should reflect that.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Lippold?
Oh, yes. So I had like a two-part question. The first part was the, when we're sending the applications out, like the, for the job, the job postings online, are we sending them out in Spanish as well?
That's a great question. We make the information available in multiple places in multiple languages, but we're always looking for ways to make that more available. In addition to things being posted electronically, which we know is a common standard practice, it's not the only way to make information available. We have also, which is, I didn't point this out, but is highlighted in the report, we've also been looking for, or rather, increasing opportunities to meet with groups of people face-to-face so that they can get information and get to know us and feel a sense of connection that would encourage them to apply beyond an impersonal webpage or printed document.
And then the second part of that question is, what do you think would be, because it's kind of obvious, the applicant pool, we're hiring about equal to the applicant pool, right? But the applicant pool is not proportionate to our community. So what, do we have any idea of what could be the disconnect there?
Well, Dr. Sprouls talked to you a little bit about some information a couple of weeks ago that highlights how, for the licensed educators, that our universities are only admitting and graduating X number or X percentage of people of a diverse background or status. And so we're partnering with them about who is admitted. And that's why I highlighted our diversity pathways program, which is one specific example about how we encourage people to attend a university specifically with seeking a teaching career. But there's multiple ways that we're doing that. Some of them are highlighted in the report here, but we're interested in partnering with our community agencies and universities all the time to increase that. Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Bate.
Thank you.
For the information. It's appreciated. We have one more report this evening.
We'll call Mr. Wolf again to the podium.
Thank you. So tonight, this report is an update on the Howard Street charter school contract. And so just a brief reminder that back in June of 2017, the district notified Howard Street that they need to find a new place based on the fact that we had increased student enrollment coming to South and also our bond project there. And so Howard Street and the board have been working diligently over the months to find a place, purchase, and renovate. They've been to the board several times, December of 2018, most recent at February 12th of 2019, where an amendment was approved that increased their total enrollment cap from 180 to 200 students and added intercept agreement language as a pass-through payment for their financing plan, which is through the Oregon Facilities Authority. And so we wanted to make sure that the board understood, you know, what's going on with the Howard Street charter. There's current language in the, in the charter that says that there'll be a mix. There'll be both district employees and Howard Street employees at the charter. As a way to meet their financial targets for the financing package, which, by the way, I was just informed by principal that yesterday, their financing package was unanimously approved by Oregon Facilities Authority. As a way to meet those financial ratios, Howard Street has a plan to reduce their costs. And it, to reduce costs means actually having direct hire employees as opposed to district staff employees. That's one method. And so they're actually reducing the number of district employees that they have currently from about 3.3 FTE to a .3 orchestra teacher FTE. So technically, the letter of, of the contract, the letter of the terms and conditions is still being met because there's still a .3 orchestra teacher. What you see in the board plate are the bulleted items. In the event that Howard Street would reduce the .3, eliminate the .3, there would need to be board action taken to amend the current language in the charter agreement in the way that you see lined out in the bulleted statements. And so we're not at that place. We're not presenting changes to the, the contract, the charter agreement. We're letting you know, though, the changes that are being implemented by Howard Street to actually meet their financial targets, purchase and renovate the facility so that they can be out of the current facility in time for the school year and also for our construction project at South. So with that, and I may depend on our general counsel to answer any questions, any detailed questions that you may have.
Questions? Director Kylo?
My, my question is not, is, involves the three staff who are leaving or being whatever they, whatever their status is, have they been notified of their contractual rights to transfer and be moved? And have they waived those rights? Have they already resigned? Or are they being transferred? I'm, I'm just curious. And, and my bigger concern is, is it voluntary or are they being pressured to stay? So I don't care who answers it. It could be Mr. Bate who answers it.
Well, what I would say is, we've had all of these conversations with the Howard Street board as well, and they're well-informed of our current process. And so I don't have an exact status on where they are in the conversations with this. But I do know that as our employees, that we would have the obligation to place them if they wanted to stay as our employee.
But my question is, have they been made aware that they have those rights?
Yes.
And I can, I can amplify on that a bit, that Howard Street has consulted with their own employment attorney. We've, we've been informed and, and has had this conversation about that portion of Chapter 338 that allows people to elect to retain their status and go to a charter school to be an employee. And we've been informed that the, the office manager, the principal, and the math teacher, who are the full-time employees, have all elected to do this.
Okay.
Now, the .3 orchestra teacher, I think that Howard Street's idea is that that person would remain a district employee for, for the remainder of their contract. And we wanted to make sure that you all understood that while there's, there's still a .3 employee, so technically, they meet the terms of, of the charter agreement.
Okay. And they're following the law, as far as we know, paying purs and things like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Director Green?
Madam Chair, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I will reiterate what I said both in December and at a previous meeting with regard to this. My concern is not about the liability of the school district. I understand through the OFA, there'll be an intercept agreement where state school fund dollars will be intercepted instead of being sent to the charter school. It'll go to pay their bonded indebtedness with the OFA. My concern is the program that's going to be retained at Howard Street because the cost of the facility, you've already seen one move here, which I'm going to assume they're going to take these folks on as employees and pay them less than what our scale is within our district. As you start to have tight budgets, and we've had them here in the school district, there's only certain things you can do. You cut people, or you cut program, or you cut days. And I think one of the things that they're going to find out is it's very expensive to operate your own facility. And I'm fearful that the program that has been very strong at Howard Street, that has attracted the families and the kids to go there, will be a shell of itself in the future because of these ongoing costs. And I think that is a disservice to those families and to the vision of what Howard Street was back in 1999 when we worked to assure that Howard Street was created. I worked with district council. I was at a different, at the same employer in a different role, not on the board here. It was one of the very first charter schools in the state, had a great vision for kids. I think they still have that great vision. I think the reality of running and operating a facility may run smack dab into the face of that vision. And I'm concerned about those kids and their program. As a district, if that program's not viable, we will have to take those kids back into our neighborhood schools. We're ready, willing, and able to do that. I just, I just think, and I reiterate it again, that these costs will be ongoing. And I hope their program can survive to the vision of what Howard Street was created in 1999. But I have concerns about that vision and the program for those students.
Thank you, Director Green. Any other comments? That was an information report. So we'll move on to, on your packet. I want you to note that there is a meeting date and a calendar for the School Board Budget Committee. And the first meeting here will be April 23rd. And now we're into public comment. And this is for non-agenda items only. Sandra Hernandez? Sandra present? Would you come to the podium, please? Would you come to the podium, please?
As y'all, some of you might already know me. My name is Sandra Hernandez, and I'm the director of Latinos Unidos Siempre, a local youth organization here in Salem. Today, I'm actually here on behalf of the 50 loose youth members and also on behalf of nine other sister organizations and community members who are in support of students in the Salem Kaiser School District. So, some of you know that May Day is coming up pretty soon, next month, May 1st, Wednesday, May 1st, 2019. And this is a day that is celebrated every year at the Capitol and organized mainly by CAUSA, but also by the other sister organizations who support the worker rights movement and specifically immigrant worker rights. We're, I'm here today to ask you for your support of students in the Salem Kaiser School District who want to attend May Day. By that, I mean not criminalizing students who decide to walk out of school that day to attend the event. I remember, I was a student in the Salem Kaiser School District some years back. I remember actually going out of class, going out of school to attend May Day and being supported by teachers and the administration, which basically means just not being, not facing any repercussions for attending. So, if you see students leaving out of school to attend that day, you know, making sure they don't get referrals or get some other type of criminalization for going to this event. It's a very, very important event. This year, we're talking about licenses for all, driver's licenses for all. As you know, 52% of the student population are students of color, majority being, you know, immigrant, coming from immigrant families. So, this is a very personal issue, and some might say that, you know, education is separate from this issue, but it's not because this issue affects students every day in the classroom. You know, when they have to worry about their parents driving them to school, whether they're going to be stopped, you know, or even themselves, there's a lot of undocumented students in the Salem Kaiser School District who will be benefiting from this law if it passes, and they want to be there present. They want to be part of the, you know, the community when they bring this issue at the Capitol. May Day is a worker rights, International Worker Rights Day, for those that might not know. And the United States is one of the only countries that doesn't celebrate or doesn't institutionalize it as a holiday. There are many countries around the world who have institutionalized it as a holiday and pay workers the day off to attend and even allow students to attend and celebrate the Worker, Worker Rights Day. So, again, I'm here to ask for your support, and this looks like, the support would look like honoring students who choose to walk out of school to attend the demonstration, not enforcing policies that would bring punishable repercussions of students for walking out and who want to be part of May Day, sending out a letter to all parents and school district staff to inform them that this is happening and that they should respect students' rights to attend, and providing factual information about May Day so that students have that information on hand if they choose to attend. And your support will decriminalize student activism and allow for safe mobilization of students. And it will also be, you know, a message of solidarity with the undocumented students that you have in the school district and students who have undocumented family members of parents. So, we know that the school district has supported, you know, student walkouts in the past. In 2017, McKee High School allowed, and North Salem High School supported the first student walkout for DACA. In 2018, this last year, we know that the school district supported the walkouts for students to bring awareness around gun violence. So, this is not the first time that the school district would be supporting a walkout. And we know that last year-
We called you on your time. I need to interrupt you, and you're over time.
Okay. So, the last message is to please support us on this issue, and I would like to hear back from you, what your thoughts are on this, and if you can decide whether to support, to support your students for the May Day rally.
Thank you for appearing. And we will talk about that. We won't make a decision at this point, but you have been heard, and thank you.
Thank you.
Alexander Sosa Navarro.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm here to talk about INS A0115, Selection 10. I'm, I am a student at Claggett Creek Middle School. Next year, I will be attending North Salem High School. I recently found out the school district has passed a law to allow schools to test high schoolers on alcohol levels during school dances. I think this is a bad idea. As a student, it makes me feel like our school staff don't trust us. It makes me feel that before entering schools, the school doors, we are already seen as criminals. I think instead of investing money on things that criminalize the students, we should invest in more education opportunities. I would like to know what's your plan to address this and how you would use your equity lens and voice to of your students on this issue.
Alexander, we aren't a decision-making board, so we will consider it. We've heard you, but we will not make a decision this evening. So, thank you. That's courageous of you to do. I appreciate it. Cindy Gaten. Is Cindy here? Yes.
My name is Cindy, and I work with youth ranging from ages 11 up until their early twenties. Today, I'm here advocating for them because every single time I sit down and talk with them, they are very open enough to tell me the unnecessary experiences they had to face at their schools and their concerns. So, a huge concern that I've heard from the work that I work from, the youth that I work with, sorry, that are attending high school right now are the breathalyzers set to be implemented for all high schools and will be administered at schools to test alcohol levels. Although the policy states that these tests will be done randomly, the wording leaves space for subjective testing of students, and it does not actually set in place methods of randomization. Additionally, we know that this policy will create even more barriers for students of color and students of low income to attend after-school events. And I mean, many students of color have already expressed that they do not feel included in most school activities, especially dances and proms. I already know what some people are going to say, "Oh, this isn't a racial issue," but it is. It goes deeper than just breathalyzers. We can simply look at suspension rates in Oregon and notice that the youth of color are disproportionately represented in disciplinary actions. The youth I work with have expressed that because of this policy, many of them will not attend dances because this adds on another level of policing and will be used as a tool for the school to stereotype youth of color. I'm curious as to how you, as individuals that were elected to be on the school board, will address these concerns with, of course, using your equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate what you had to say, and I appreciate the time you spent to come and say it, and we will talk about that.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
If I may, I know that Superintendent Perry's not here tonight, so I'd like to ask our interim deputy superintendent to bring these issues up that were just testified with our superintendent so that those folks that did testify get some feedback from the district with regard to that. And whatever our past policy's been with May Day, I'd like to at least say I support what the group has asked for, that the groups that have signed on to the letter here have asked for, so that their students can participate in that, and hopefully, we can accommodate that as a school district. But if you could make sure that Christie gets back to those folks, I'd appreciate it.
We'll do so. Thanks.
That ends my list on non-agenda items. And let's see, Superintendent?
Board activity.
Board activity. So, any board members that wish to comment on things they have done this last since Chuck or Director Lee?
It was my honor to participate in two groundbreaking ceremonies, one at North and one at GUBSR, and it's good to see the work of our bond measures starting to take place.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Superintendent's?
You've got to put your hand up quick.
Director Lipol.
Slow on the draw. I just want to say, I went to those groundbreaking events. That was awesome. We got some golden shovels. So, that's cool. And, but yeah, no, it was great. It was awesome being able to see the teachers and meet some cool students and hear their speech, their speeches. I thought it was fantastic. I also got the opportunity to represent our Legislative Policy Committee, going to the National School Boards Association. Jim was there as well. And Chuck, I thought we didn't see each other. There were so many people there. But it was excellent because we got to learn a lot. I went to a lot of forums about mental health, equity, and those, oh, and foster kids. Those were my main ones that I stuck to on throughout the entire week. And it was really cool because we got to hear from not just Oregon, right, but we got to hear from the entire nation of different school districts who are being really successful in those areas and hear about the policies and the things that they're doing to address those needs. And I thought that was, it was, it was fantastic. And then, I had something else, but I forgot it. So, anyways, have a great day, guys.
Thank you. One comment by my, that I'll put in for me is that I have been following the media closely, and there is a lot of attention given to suicide and things that come up prior to that and things that will help us identify possible cases and how to deal with them. So, I do appreciate the media for coming up with that. I think it's so important that we let parents know, and hopefully, we can approach that topic that is difficult and do our best to reduce that. Moving on, Mr. Orth. Will you be sharing a few items on Superintendent Perry's behalf?
Sure will. I get only this opportunity rarely, so. Christie and Lillian actually had the privilege on March 31st of attending an event for Transgender Day of Visibility. It was hosted by Pete Flag at Willamette University, and two of our McNary students made a real impact during the panel discussion. And they gave Christie some tasks following the panel discussion, nothing like a homework assignment from our students, and we look forward to sharing updates on that work soon. Chuck, thanks for mentioning the groundbreakings. Those were, those were excellent events and well-organized by our Communications Department. I would like to thank our Kaiser City Council and Kaiser Mayor Kathy Clark for coming to GUBSR and all of our board members who were able to attend.
Go Kaiser.
Tonight, you probably missed it at 4:00. K2 aired a story about some of our amazing North Salem teachers for Leaders in Learning Series. And don't worry, you can catch this, catch Sarah Cowan sharing how she helps get her students across the graduation stage tomorrow morning at 5:00 a.m., if you're up that early. It'll also probably air again during the weekend, and it's online. Two more. I, as the CTE Director, I get to have an opportunity to welcome and celebrate the successes of our culinary programs, but also, last week, our State FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, had a competition, and our West Salem High School represented very well, winning banking and finance systems and a third place as well. West Salem also took first place for sports and entertainment marketing, and McNary High School won for e-business. Lastly, I'd like to celebrate Lee Elementary students who won an award for the Toshiba NSTA Explorer Vision Contest. Their project about leaves changing shapes was recognized by a panel of science educators and distinguished scientists. Since it won the regional level, it'll now qualify for the national competition, so good luck to the Lee students there. That's all I've got.
And it sounds like we had a lot of winners for kids in the district, and that's what we all like to see. That comes to the end of our meeting, and I adjourned for the evening.